Okay, we'll call to order this June the 5th, 2019 meeting, the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Stoudamire.
President.
Commissioner Waymire.
President.
Chair Howard.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President. All stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain and stand for the invocation to be led by Reverend Charles Adams of the Faith Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us that guided by your Spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably. And as we come to the 75th anniversary of D-Day this week, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and ask your blessing on those who serve us in danger to protect those freedoms. All of this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, takes us correspondence and organizational business. I have nothing there. Takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Scott Overman. You'll state your name and address.
Scott Overman, 181 Walnut Creek Road, Wellsville, Kansas. I just wanted to come in this morning and see if I could get on the list to possibly get some deteriorating road conditions on our road in Wellsville addressed. We've got some pretty good puddles, been there for eight, 10 years. They've become major holes. You can't dodge them anymore. They're six, eight inches deep, causing vehicle damage. The road was chipped and sealed in 2016, and then Franklin County sent a crew out and patched the holes over the top of the brand-new chip and seal. When you contact the office down here at Franklin County, they send a guy with a shovel, a flatbed truck, and some asphalt. He does nothing to prepare the holes so that the asphalt will adhere properly. He doesn't compact it, doesn't smooth it, doesn't do any effort to make it work. This is also a common drive-around road for Thomas Road, which you may or may not know is commonly has a problem when it rains a lot and floods. Everybody cuts through our neighborhood. Not a big deal. I would ask to be put on a schedule for a proper fix, have a crew come out and cut the area out and roll it in the proper way so it would last. There's 22 residents that use this road for their houses with a roughly $80,000 in property taxes collected annually. I'd hopefully consider our request.
Gene Hurt.
Gene Hurt, 219 West Fourth Street in Linden, Kansas. I see you all had a little bit of rain, a little over five inches the other day. We didn't get anything. Sorry to hear about all that. Now, over here on the wall, I've told you all before, there's six principles of code of conduct. Last week, we saw in here that number five was not followed, okay? So, it doesn't surprise me any. And then from what this gentleman just spoke before me now, see, that's why we come here. Because this is why we come here, to tell you problems. It don't do no good to go to the department heads anymore. This is where it comes, to get on the record and let all the people see on YouTube what the count was for last week's meeting. You know, I had phone calls, two from Richmond, one from Rantoul, and two from Wellsville. And every one of them said, he said, "Gene, don't they know what you've done for this county in 17 years?" And I said, "Well, I guess maybe that goes in one ear and out the other, I guess," or what I did. But I'm not going to change. By no means. I'm going to be doing just what I have to do for those people out there, just like this man here had to come in here to tell you today about a road up in your area, Stoudamire. Geez. Okay, now, you know, Janet, you know, 62 votes and 62 votes for Wellsville, only 124 people voted? My God, that is, that has to be a shame for Wellsville, the people not getting out to vote. And when you went on the radio saying, "Please, people, your turnout's so low, get out and vote." Man, I couldn't believe it, 62 to 62. And then, you know, at the meeting at Linden last week for the lakes, the dams, there was a guy there from Los Angeles, Milt was there from the radio station, and it was packed. And the one guy I talked to afterwards from Los Angeles, and I told him, "What did you think of our dams?" He said, "Well," he said, "you know what? I went out and looked at them, and he says, 'They were constructed decent. Nothing like what California does. Theirs fail.'" So he said, "I'm proud to be here in the Midwest to see somebody that does something right." Thank you.
Richard Oglesby.
Richard Oglesby, 527 South Cherry, Ottawa, Kansas. Good morning, commissioners. It's good to see you all this morning. I've tried not to come back and visit you too often here and say anything about how things are going, but I simply couldn't let last week's meeting go by without saying something. And I watched that meeting last week, and I thought, here's a group of people that run around with half-truths, with half-to, no facts at all. They're telling the whole world that the sky's falling, and they're clueless. We have a regular that's come into these chambers and told everybody in the entire world that we've invested millions of dollars in a floodplain, and he has no engineer degree whatsoever. He has no TERRICON information whatsoever. He has no idea the information that he's spreading out there to potential buyers and potential investors into our community. They've told everybody it's been a waste of money to build an industrial park out on the south end of town. The fact is, folks, you know, and I know, we live in a different world than we did 10 years ago. With the tax law in place, we have all but two choices to make. You have two choices to make. You're going to either have to cut services in the upcoming years, or we have to grow the tax base. It's that simple. And if we don't have anywhere for people to go to build, to grow the tax base, I think we know what's coming. And that's going to be a cut in services. That's going to be a cut in services that none of us want to see. We talk about roads now. What are roads going to be like if we have to cut our taxes and our services even more to just get by? They've complained about the new motel being built, and they clearly do not understand all the facts. This does not cost our county one single dime. We only stand to gain. Our tax revenue will increase. Our transient guest tax will increase. Everything is to gain from this project. They say they are concerned citizens, but they're not. Or they would work to promote this county, and they would work to promote growth for this community. They would address concerns in private instead of a public meeting and try to get them addressed there. The whole thing is, this is about advancing their own political viewpoint and their own political careers.
One minute left.
These concerned citizens don't represent the majority of Franklin Countyans. They're a small vocal group that finds more joy in tearing down this county than building a better community. And I just tell you all, we're with you. We support you. We support the department heads that are out there trying to do the best they can with the tools that they've been given and the tools that you've been given. So keep up the good work, commissioners. Keep up the good work, department heads.
Anyone else?
Norman Woogie.
Five minutes, Norman.
Norman Woogie, 37 Nighty Pony Road. I don't agree. Does that surprise you? Reason, we do have information. I've gone to meetings for over 50 years, and it just astounds me of all things that's happened. A lot of people should have been put in jail, but they just lost their jobs. Anyway, I put this together early this morning, and normally I, when I put something together, I wait a couple days and look at it and make sure it's not a fancy bit. Eh, what the heck. I have been active in politics for many years. I've seen things and heard things that are absolutely unbelievable. Forty years ago, I saw people in power retaliate against, retaliate against other people because they thought their democratic rights were violated. The commission borrowed money, millions, without the vote of the people, and did it through loopholes and twisting the rules to let the citizens know that the commission has the power. When a commission acts in a matter that breeds corruption, I have seen good people go bad. Good Christian people swayed by money and giving in without saying what their motive. Flying a better, a Christian atmosphere and wearing a mask of doing good. People that come in here and through the zoning operation and say, "Well, we got a Christian operation." And mark my word, in two years, they'll be back and say, "We don't want to pay taxes because it's a Christian organization." Another instance, when a disgruntled citizen was so upset that in his despair, he said, "You are not going by the Constitution." After he left, the commissioner says, "We don't have to go by the Constitution." To remind all of you, when you were sworn in and held your hand up swearing, you should remember, I always said, "If you side with the people that don't do right, and you are no better than one of them, one cigarette, remember the Motor Cross." That's, that's just, I still can't understand that.
One minute.
At the last week meeting, I witnessed behavior unbecoming to the commission. Someone did an excellent job of cleaning up the videotape of the comments endorsed by the commission. We have rules as the citizens, and I would like to see the same courtesy from you. I have seen theft of county property. People of the group videotaped it. These people mean business and were rougher than the people now representing themselves as citizens. They work hard to bring to light the things in their view, and they have a right to be heard and not shunned by you guys. If you as individuals...
Time's up. I'll bring it next week. Takes to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need considered and approved today are the meeting minutes from 5:29 to 19:00. Claim vouchers in the amount of $1,195,669.51, and special claim vouchers in the amount of $1,019,79.11. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Motion is a second.
Commissioner Stoudamire.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Okay, it takes us to items of business. First item of business today is the approval of rezoning application 1904-1666 to rezone approximately 56.30 acres from an A1 agriculture to an A2 transitional agriculture.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As you've indicated, this is a request for a rezoning. This matter was heard by the planning commission, excuse me, by the planning commission at their last meeting. They have forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners for the approval of the rezoning request to rezone approximately 56 acres from the A1 to the A2 zoning district. And the reason for that is that this is the remaining property. There's already been a lot split that was taken out and rezoned a couple years ago. And now that that property is being, the 56 acres is being divided, neither parcel is going to meet the minimum requirement of 40 acres. So the whole 56 acres will be rezoned then to the A2 transitional zoning district. As I indicated, it does satisfy the county's requirements for zoning and meets the comprehensive plan, and the planning commission has recommended that you approve the rezoning request and direct staff to change the official zoning map accordingly.
Any questions on this? If not, we'll look to a motion to approve the rezoning application 1904-1666 to rezone approximately 56.30 acres from an A1 to an A2. Motion to approve. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire.
Yeah.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Okay, our second item of business is the approval of the final plat of McGrath Acres subdivision located at the intersection of John Brown Road and Alabama Road on the north side of John Brown Road and on the east side of Alabama Road.
This is the same property that you have just considered in your action for the rezoning. This is a situation where they have already utilized their one-time opportunity for a lot split. Lot splits the planning director can approve, provided it meets the comprehensive plan, zoning regulations, and subdivision regulations. So that matter was done, excuse me, a couple of years ago when that seven, approximately seven acres was divided out and sold to a relative. Typically, these things would not have to come back as a subdivision plant. However, when you have separate financing, it's on the seven acres plus the house, the financing arrangements now are going to be complicated enough that the acquisition of this additional acreage cannot be merged together as a boundary line adjustment, and therefore, it's going to be under a separate, a separate loan. And because of that, then it does require a land division to do that. So the only way we could resolve that would be what we call a small subdivision plant, where you're going to be creating less than five new lots, in this case, one new lot. And after reviewing this, the planning commission found that it does satisfy all of the requirements of our subdivision regulations, would be consistent with the now rezoning, and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and would ask that you accept the offers of dedication and easements that are shown on the face of the plat.
So the exception in Lot Two could never be sold separately, the way you've got it? You already have that, like, eight acres that was out, and then you have Lot Two around it, but nobody could ever sell those separately?
Yes.
They could?
That's the very reason that they're doing the subdivision.
So even though Lot Two goes all the way around?
Otherwise, they would have done, they would have done a boundary line adjustment, merging the seven acres plus the additional acreage that they're acquiring from the McGraths.
Okay.
But because of separate financing for the house and the seven acres, we will have to create two different parcels to do that. And the only way we can do it would be with what we call a small subdivision plat.
You sent the letters out and everything to the neighbors on all this?
Yes, we did give notice. In this case, we had to give notice even into Osage County because it does sit right at the county line.
I do know that one neighbor was not real happy with this at first, and I have had conversations with him, and he understands that it's nothing really a problem. It's just he didn't want more neighbors down the road was all his issue was with it.
And this would allow one additional residence to be created. But that same person that you were talking about, Mr. Chairman, contacted the office too, and I think we finally reached a full understanding of what was actually being done.
Any questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the final plat of the McGrath Acres subdivision.
Make a motion to authorize the chairman to endorse the final plat of McGrath Acres subdivision located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 17 South, Range 18 East, accepting all easements and right-ofways as shown on the plat.
Second. Yeah, a second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number three, consider warning, the US-59 and Kingman Road intersection improvement project to HAM Incorporated in the amount of $1,580,846.26.
Chair, we have one public comment on this item.
Commissioners, as you know, we've been working on this for quite some time. This project is a continuation, in reality, of the Proximity Park project. This portion of the project, though, we have funding from KDOT in the amount of $1.7 million that they have agreed to reimburse us for construction costs. So on February 27th, the commission authorized us to solicit bids. On May 14th, we had the bid opening. We had four bidders. The engineer's estimate was one point, just over $1.7 million, and the low bid was HAM Incorporated, and their bid was just, was the $1.5 million. So, being that this is a KDOT project, it's not necessarily a typical project. We have a little bit more involvement than we would ordinarily. But we have been working hand-in-hand with KDOT to make sure that all the plans are approved, that we have all the easements and access easements that we need along the right-ofway there. And so what we're looking for today is a motion to approve the HAM bid. And then we'll move on to negotiating the contract, and then all that will come back before you at a later date.
We've discussed this numerous times over the past and with the KDOT and so forth, so...
I should say that what this project does, it adds turning lanes at the intersection of Kingman Road and 59 Highway. And so we will have turning lanes in both directions, turning off of. If you're coming southbound, you'll have a through lane, there will be a right turn lane, and then there will be a left turn lane as well. The same thing will happen on the southbound line as well. In addition, while we're doing this project, we will install conduits so that at a future date, once development begins and traffic counts increase, we'll be able to install traffic signals at that location. A little bit easier.
Just out of curiosity, we have a timeframe, and will 59 Highway remain open throughout the construction?
Yes. We will do, the plan is to do east half of the project first, keeping traffic open on the west half. Once we complete that and connect up with where Kingman Road left off, we will shift traffic to the east side and work on the west side. And so traffic will be disruptive, disrupted, but they will be able to pass through there, you know, without having to block the whole road.
How far will the improvements go west? I know how far it's going to go west, or east. I just don't know how far it's going to go west.
I believe it's a couple hundred feet. I don't have that figure right in front of me. I've got the plans in my office, but it's a little ways. Yeah, roughly. It's not quite as far, I don't believe, but it goes a little ways. You'll be stopping on pavement while you're waiting to turn onto 59.
And this isn't staged, it can be, that intersection can be increased, more lanes and stuff as needed down the road.
Yes, we are planning, you know, we're all hopeful that Proximity Park is successful. We've acquired right-of-way around the intersection to handle this project and future development. In a full build-out mode, we'll have to acquire additional right-of-way to the north and a little bit to the south to extend those turning lanes and so forth. But those will all be dependent upon increased traffic counts and those sorts of things. And we've already, we've been in contact with KDOT regarding, you know, future funding, and they are in support of what we're accomplishing out there. And so I think there'll be additional dollars available through KDOT when the time comes.
Let's take your public comment. Gene.
You know the drill, Gene. Five minutes only on this topic.
I don't need to be reprimanded, Rick.
I don't think I was reprimanded.
Yes, you are. You know goddamn well you are.
What?
You ain't going to do that to me no more. You don't need to do that, words, like you just said to me. I already know the rules. Now, okay, now we just heard from Oglesby come in here just a few minutes ago, bad-mouthing me and the rest of them. Well, look, I got, I got something to tell him, you know. It's not the taxpayers' fault that you bought the land the way you did out there. You guys should have moved it further east, out of the floodplain, and then there would be no discussion. But you didn't, and it is a floodplain. And then, also, Mr. Lee, you put in on the agenda, or up there on the internet, that this is only the first phase, okay? Oh, how many phases? Two, three, the stoplight, the extra lanes and all that? Well, why wait? Why don't you just go ahead and do it? You guys say it's going to work. Put them in now. No, because, see, you're not so sure if it's going to work. And that ain't my fault. It's not mine, it's yours. You made the mistake. And you know, Waymire, you snicker at me all the time about this. I'm sorry, but by God, you know, and look what the city is now. They're going to be doing some changes to this out there, right in that area. I heard it on the radio this morning. Now, I have no idea. You guys must not be on track with the city, or you aren't on track on this, or you, one of you. But remember the guy that told you when they came down there and said to you, "You got to move, move, move! You can't sit on this." Because Topeka right now has got two more companies coming up there. Free Land. Free land, free land, offer something free out here, offer something free like they are, because they're flocking to it. I-70 is better, they say, than I-35. Now, I ain't saying that, they are. Thank you.
Comments? Wow. Okay. If not, we'll look to a motion to approve the bid of $1,580,846.26 to HAM Incorporated for the improvement of the US-59 and Kingman Road intersection.
Make an affirmative motion to that effect.
Motions are seconded?
I was seconding it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Takes us to staff reports. Larry, you have anything else?
We have one more item.
Oh, my bad. Item number four.
Yeah, let's do this, Rick.
That's what I had. Okay, item number four, consider for approval the commitment of county funds for the replacement of Bridge 17-11.8 on Pawnee Road west of Eisenhower Road. KDOT project number 030C-4913-01.
Commissioners, in June of 2017, the commission approved the application for KDOT local off-system bridge program to replace a bridge on Pawnee Road just west of Eisenhower. The application was submitted to KDOT and approved. They had, at the beginning, they had an initial construction cost, not including construction engineering and construction inspection of $480,000. At that time, the local share was estimated at $110,000 for us, it's an 80/20 match on these local off-system bridge program through KDOT. The bridge was designed in 2018, and construction bids were opened on May 22nd of this year. We had two bidders only. The bid submitted by Brian Olmeyer Construction out of Pale, Kansas, was the low bid. This company has built a number of bridges in the county, well, in this whole region, really, and they've got a really good reputation, they do solid work, they've built a number of bridges for us as well. The total project cost, including construction engineering and construction inspection, is Of that, Franklin County is only responsible for $95,000 of that. The, we will need to pay this $95,000 upfront to give the state money to pay the contractor at the beginning of the project. This money has been set aside. Last year, we set aside $102,000 for this, so we have money set aside specifically for this project, and so, we are, we would ask the commission to sign the commitment of funds document, that will need signatures from all the commissioners, along with allowing us to write that check for $95,000. All of the information that was provided to me from KDOT is in your packet, it breaks down all of the costs and our share of those costs. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
This is not new, it's something we've done on other bridges also in the past, bridges, so, like you said, money was set aside for this bridge?
This particular bridge was one of the lowest sufficiency ratings that we've had. Our consultant's in the process of inspecting all of the bridges right now, so I don't have the updated information just yet, but in the last report, it was at the 32 percentile, which is very, very low, and so, we, it'll be, it's a safety issue, we really want to get this bridge replaced as quickly as possible.
Yeah, this bridge is narrow also.
It is narrow.
A lot of heavy traffic goes across this bridge, so I'm glad to see it's coming together to get it replaced.
Yes.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to commit county funds documents and approve the $95,000 matching funds payment for the replacement of Bridge 17-11.8, KDOT project number 030C-4913-01.
Motions are seconded?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, now we go to staff reports. Larry, you have anything else?
You still don't?
Maybe time to think about it.
Commissioners, we continue to document the damage, and we're also in repair mode. We're trying to get around to all the different areas in the county. Today, we have a meeting with some state emergency management folks to begin a preliminary damage assessment. This is one of the steps in the, what's going to be a long process to hopefully get reimbursed for all of the rock and other damage that has occurred in the county. So, we're starting that process in earnest right now.
Just a couple of reminders for you guys, I know some of you were discussing it before the meeting, we will have a study session on Monday, and Rodney Burns, our auditor, will be here to go over his audit findings, and then immediately following that meeting, we're going to have the canvas of the Wellsville election right here in this room, so I'll just bring everything down here, so we're ready to go right after this, so we don't have to take up any more of your time. Everything looks fairly cut and dry right now, we have one provisional to review, and as Gene stated in the public comment, right now, the election is tied 62 to 62. We could receive some additional ballots in the mail that are postmarked before Election Day, if we receive those before Friday, we will go ahead and count those, and those will be in your count that you'll see on Monday. But regardless, we'll have one provisional to review and make a decision whether to count, so I'll be reviewing all of the statutes and all the details on what we will do if it does continue to be a tie. So, yeah, we're going forward with that. We are continuing to work on the budget, getting everything ready for you guys, we're hopeful that maybe next week you might have your budget books, but that's a pretty optimistic goal, as we've got a lot of updating to do after we get the audit information from Rodney, so, and we'll have to get all those worksheets updated, so.
Just, Commissioner comments and board reports?
Yeah, I attended Wellsville last week, meeting city, you can imagine, the biggest part of that meeting was discussion from the public and explanations on the half-cent sales tax and the importance of, and Mayor Lidle tried to do the best he can, plus, the ink of the following day, maybe after that meeting, they had a deal with the library, invited all the public to come in and to meet with the mayor and discuss the half-cent sales tax and how it'd be used and how it come to be, and so, I think the city did their part as far as explanations, now it's just up to that one person, I guess, to make a decision on how the whole city works. So, yeah, I attended a rental city meeting, and just like Gene said, between seven and eight o'clock last Monday night, we had four inches of rain. There's water, I ain't never seen water before on Rock Creek Road. I can't believe the roads are holding up as good as they are. I mean, in my 71 years, I've never seen this much rain, and this hard rain, and this vicious rain. City rental wanted to pass on Public Works' bank, for their work on Vermont, keeping it clear through the flood when they could, keeping debris off of the road. And one other thing, they have been discussing about upgrading their sewer and water system down here, had problems here. So, I talked to Barbara Anderson, which is regional project manager for business and community development, she does, I believe, 19 counties, Franklin on south, with the Commerce Department, and had her come in, explain to the city, there has been some money freed up for grants and loans on these types of projects, and for a size of town down there, they could get up to $240,000, and the city would have to come up with a 25% match, so that's what they're kind of, not saying they'll do it, but at least they had an offer and more than they had before, and there wasn't anything, I think, they could go after last year, and then could added some new money to Commerce for that rural project, so that's all I got.
Be a building rededication sometime in the future for the new, for the hospital, with its new operations, but no date yet?
I was at the Princeton County City Council meeting on Monday night, they actually had a pretty long meeting, they went until nine o'clock, and just some of the highlights, I think that they talked with David Lee, he's going to provide them some cold patch for some of their potholes, of course, they're dealing with the same kind of things, but they also agreed last night to accept a contract from Vance Brothers, and when he's in the area doing our roads, he's going to do the Princeton roads also, which will be awesome. They are dealing with water like all the rest of us, their lagoon actually overflowed, which, you know, with the water. They are considering a half-cent sales tax also, possibly in November election. And then, a lot of the time was spent on the playground, that's coming, hopefully, in the, hopefully with the rain, the rain will give them a chance to get it in, but anyway, they have a couple of work dates. On June 22nd, they're going to do kind of a preparation dirt kind of work day, and then the new playground itself is going, supposed to go in on July 6th, so they're always looking for volunteers. And the playground, they actually were donated over, over a thousand bags of chips, and they are providing them to anybody who's interested for a dollar a bag, so if you're interested, I bet I can get hold of one or two, or a box of eight, or 20, or whatever you want, and if you wanted to donate more than a dollar a bag, I'm sure they would accept that also. I am going to try to not put my other foot in my mouth, but last week, I mentioned a gentleman's name in my public comments, I have apologized to him, but I think what my public comment kind of got lost in the shuffle, because my public comment was basically, if we ever have a flood situation again, and the public is out and they see a road that doesn't have a barrier, that, you know, or any other time that there is a unsafe road condition, I was just encouraging the public to get hold of their commissioner, the Public Works Department, Derek, so that those situations can be taken care of kindly. And the other thing I would like to say is, yesterday was the 100th anniversary of when Congress passed, approved the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote.
That's good to know.
Yeah. It still had to be approved by three-quarters of the state, so it was not a done deal, but it was that the Congress passed.
Anyway, I just wanted to remind everybody, Conservation District has a meeting in Overbrook tonight for farmers or interested people about the farm situation. Up north of town, we was actually pretty lucky, because people were in the field, working the field yesterday, so we didn't get five inches north of town, so that's very fortunate, but this meeting's for the, help farmers decide what to do if they can't get their crops planted, or unable to plant, or they're damaged, so anyway, that's in Overbrook tonight for the farmers. And I just wanted to mention also, got to remember D-Day, which is tomorrow, the 75th anniversary of D-Day, that was the beginning of the end of World War II, and to just emphasize the sacrifice of our men and women in uniform, when the time comes, to preserve the freedom of the free world, probably spend there to step up and do that calling.
Okay, I, Monday night, I attended Winsburg City Council meeting, it was a fairly short meeting, they'd had it like one a couple weeks before, because one was rescheduled, so they didn't have a lot on the agenda, they talked about their streets and ditches again, and they are starting to work on their streets and put some rock down, they have an individual that's retired, he was an operator in the city, he's a very good operator, he's retired, and he's hauling rock, he has a truck, and he's been hauling some rock for them, they said he contacted him after he had hauled some rock and said, "You mind if I get on your blade and spread that rock?" And they said, "No, go ahead," and so, they discussed that, and hopefully, he wants to get on that blade some more, he's very good on it, so. Anyway, they talked about their utility contractor, they're on call, their contract's coming up pretty soon, they talked about renewing that. They had some damage on their, the football field, which is now the city's property, the school turned it over a few years ago to them. When they had the damage on the football field, some vehicles get on there when there was mud, they discovered that they had no insurance on the football field. So, then also, as they were looking into it, they found that all their city coverage is currently on a cash value, not replacement value, so they're going to look into that and redo all their insurance and make sure everything's insured and at the way it should be. And then, yesterday morning, I attended the FCDC Executive Board meeting, it also was a very short agenda, there's, had a couple updates from the strategic plan committees on where they're at on their projects, on their new director, updates on the search, they've had several phone interviews, I think there's four or five that they've interviewed on the phone, they may add one more, and Joanne is in the process of setting up the interviews for that, that'll be coming up pretty quick, and hopefully, they get that director in there pretty quick. And other than that, they just said the 2020 budget has been submitted to the city and the county, it was submitted May the 28th, so they'll be waiting for those to be, go through the city and county. And that was all on that. One other thing, I did have a farmer come by, I already talked to David about this a couple days ago, he and I took a ride for about an hour, drove some of the roads in his area, looked at some different things and so forth, and he showed me some of his concerns on those roads, and I've talked to David about it. I had another call on a bridge on Colorado Road, it's got some issues, David and I had discussed that this morning too, and I had an individual talk to me, call me about his septic tank, he has a situation, he's selling his property, and running some issues on the septic tank, and I've notified Larry on that, we're going to talk more after the meeting about that, so. Anyway, that's all I have right now. I will say, on public comment, on, on our public comment, there's some issues that's going on, I think when the counselor gets back, we're going to sit down, we're going to look at some things, we're straying away from some of the things that should be being done on public comment, and it's going to the level where we don't want it at, so we're going to look at that and maybe talk about the policies on our public comment, what's going on, and there may be some changes coming to that, there may not, but anyway, we're going to discuss that, so I just wanted to put that out there, it won't be a surprise to anybody if there is some changes, so. But that's all I have. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Our upcoming, like Janet said, there's a study session on June 10th, commission meeting on the 12th.
What's on the 10th?
Canvas after the study session on the 10th, I will not be here, Janet knows that, you got a replacement. Not anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
We go, have the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Or adjourned?